13th Torrington zoning board of appeals meeting. Tonight, myself, Mark Travella, Mr. Edwards, good to see you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Jim Steck. And tonight, we have Steve Thompson and Randy, what's Randy's last?
Selma.
Selma. Will be on the board tonight. We will seat them both to be our quorum members.
Okay. So myself, Mr. Edwards, Jim Steck seating tonight as our complement of quorum members, Steve Thompson and Randy Selma, was it? And Nate Cirrus. Assistant city planner?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure I said it right. We'll be on the board this evening. Our first order of business, gentlemen. Roll call is done. Election of new zoning board appeals officers. So. We have three positions, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. Do we nominate each other?
Yeah, it just, you know, if someone, you can nominate yourself if you'd like.
Well, I, I don't have a problem if other people, I mean, I'll continue.
I'll nominate Mark Travella as chairman.
That's fine.
I'll second.
Okay, I accept your nomination. I nominate Jim as our vice chairman.
Well, do you want to take a vote on the?
Oh, I thought we were just doing the lineup first. Okay.
Well, you can do that. I guess you could, I don't know.
No, that's okay.
Better thing to do, but.
May I have a vote on myself being chairman for another term?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. And then I nominate Jim Steck as my vice chairman.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Jim, do you accept?
Sure.
Okay.
I definitely can't serve as chairman, though, like.
Yeah, I know. Okay, I know. That's what I was thinking. All right, so may I have a resounding yay?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And are we having a secretary?
It's up to you. I mean, I think it's, they wouldn't have to take on the role of a secretary in the traditional sense, maybe in a smaller municipality where you'd have to actually take minutes and, you know, do sort of administrative things. It's really just a third in line. So if both the chair and the vice chair are absent, then the secretary would, would run the meeting.
So would you like that honor?
Sure.
I nominate Mr. Edwards as our secretary in standing.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. May I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. So there's our lineup. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have our minutes from six eighteen. Hopefully, everyone has read them. Do we have any questions, alterations to the minutes?
I don't have any alterations that I saw.
Thank you. With that being said, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
I'll second.
Aye.
The minutes are approved for six eighteen. We have no old business, so let's.
And Mark, just for this, just, it might be easier. I think this is fine if everyone can confirm that everyone voted aye on that, but when we do it, maybe do roll call because it is difficult on Zoom to.
Oh, it is difficult on Zoom.
So that we can, do we get everyone on, on the record?
Want to go ahead and do that over again?
Uh, I got ten as the, Ken Edwards was the.
Secretary.
Or no, I'm sorry, for the.
Made the motion, then I seconded.
Okay, Jim seconded.
And then we just do aye and can run through the names if you want.
Sure. Just for Jim's, I mean, just for Ed's?
Just for the, just for the minutes for approval. I think the other.
For the minutes, okay. So let's do a roll call. Andy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Steven?
Aye.
Thank you. Jim?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
There's Frank. Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Thank you. And I vote aye, too. Unanimous. Okay, now moving on to new business. Our first order of business is a variance, an applicant, Helen Decker.
So you can go ahead and make a motion to, to open the public hearing?
Let's make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We need a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Aye.
And now, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye. Aye.
I heard sufficient ayes.
Okay.
Helen, are you present? You may, please. You may approach the bench as they say.
Honey, want to come with me? This is my husband, Eric. I'm Helen Decker, Balsamo, six Andrews Street, Torrington. And I asked for a variance. And let me just let you know that we had no intentions of violating any zones or regulations or codes with the city. We built a carport. With the advice from a contractor that told us if it was not attached, that it did not require a permit. We went through everything with him. After getting the quote, we decided to have someone help us with the footing and the six by six beams. And my husband built the carport. When I found out that it did require a carport, I mean, a permit, I immediately came down to the building department and asked for their advice. And I was questioning why a contractor would tell me I didn't need a permit. And, you know, I just wanted to resolve it, which building sent me up to zoning, which I worked with Nate to figure out how to do this process. So was told I needed a permit, the survey, and then apply for the, the variance. So when I went for the permit, I couldn't get it because I was waiting for the variance. It took some time because when, when I came down, Nate and Ashley Clement came to my home. That was, let me see, let me just get the dates correct. On the 11th, I received the letter. I came down to City Hall and Nate and Ashley met me on my property on January 25th, 2024. And he said that I needed to go for the permit and so forth. And to make sure that the survey proved that I was within eight feet of a setback, being a corner property, having two side, two side yards and two front yards, it was five feet. And my, and my survey proved that. But in the meantime, I told them why there was such a lengthy span in between. I explained to Nate and Ashley on the 25th that I was going in for colon cancer surgery on February 14th, and that I would be laid up probably for about eight weeks. Well, it ended up being 16 weeks of recovery. So everything was delayed a little bit, but I followed through and. And so I got the, got the survey, and that did take some time. I hired Timothy Wiley. And that was in August. I finally had the survey done. It was a. I'm sorry, I got some of my notes mixed up here. The week of August 13th, and then by, so I brought the digital survey down to Nate, and we were waiting for the original, which took me until December to get from Timothy Wiley, which is fine. I went, brought that down immediately, paid for the signs, did all the due diligence of sending out the letters to my neighbors. So what my concern is, is that the original. Violation was a permit, which is eight point six point one. And I couldn't get that because the structure was already built. And it was five point two point one, the setback of eight feet. Being a corner property, it came down to five feet. And then, when I did the variance, Nate called me and said that he needed to change it from five point two point one to five point two point one E, which I'm not sure why these violations kept adding up when the original was just the permit for eight point six point one. So the reason for the structure was that I had excessive water going into the basement because there's a slight slope going towards Deanna Sanderson's home. And there was so much runoff that it would go into my basement, and it was moldy, mildew. And this is what we talked to the contractor about. We discussed, like, what can we do to stop this? What can we do to prevent it? And we brought up the idea of a carport pergola. And it has substantially saved my basement. I do not smell mold. I do not smell mildew. My basement's been dry. The sub pump has not turned on. So with that, with the angle of my yard, as you can see, the front yard is much larger. And the two side yards are not. And. And we were also told by the contractor that. So he noted that the structure was not attached to the home and that the span did not exceed 12 feet, therefore did not require a permit. So I was asking questions down in building, but no one could give me a clear answer, like, why would a contractor tell me this? And I was saving money. So basically, this is the reason why I'm here, to ask for a variance, to leave the structure, so it saves my property from damage, water damage. And due to the. Property lines, it, the water is diverted away and. Everything is working lovely.
Did you have anything to say?
Yes.
I don't think you have to bend.
Not one of my neighbors have complained about the structure in question. They all actually give me compliments and say, it looks good. It's not unsightly. And I don't believe any of my neighbors or anybody on the street. In my entire neighborhood. Has a problem with it. It's not unsightly. It keeps my basement dry. Which is a health concern, mold and mildew. And. I think that's all I have to say, sir.
And as a point, we do, we do need those cards, the receipts for the, for the mailings for the record.
For to my neighbors?
Yes.
Yes, I uploaded it for you.
Okay, I don't, we do need the physical copies as well. I can't see the uploaded ones, so I, I don't know, as a point of. Wait on the decision, if you think, I don't know how much.
Well, no, I have those right here, Nate.
Oh, you do have them. Perfect. That makes it a lot easier.
Those right here?
Uh, yes, yes. And I'll just put them right in the file. I know you uploaded them, too. We just, right. And so they, they needed two notices, Deanna Sanderson and Erica Meyer, because they don't have to send notice across the street.
Right.
So they do have that notice for the record. And I did drive by and note that they did have signs outside displaying on both road frontage that picked up from the city and displayed.
I'd have that on my cell phone if you need it.
And if you'd like, I can read the memos into the.
I would like to, yes. You mentioned that you have memos that we want to enter into the record?
Uh, yeah, I have two memos. I will, I'll read them into the record. The first is January 13th, 2025, to zoning board of appeals from Jeremy Lifer, AICP city planner, regarding proposed variance application six Andrews Street. I have reviewed the file for this proposed variance application for a variance of section five point two point one point E of the zoning regulations, which requires a 10-foot separation between the principal structures and the accessory structures. As with any other variance request, the applicant is bound by C T general statute six, eight point six and, and Torrington zoning regulations, section eight point one point three. These regulations and statutes require that the applicant provide proof of unusual hardship that is directly related to the unusual features of the property and not personal to the applicant or financial, that would deprive the property owner of a reasonable use of the property in, in the absence of the variance. This application has been submitted due to a carport structure that was built on the property without permits in violation of the above section of the regulations. Informing, enforcement actions commenced on July 2024. In my opinion, I believe removing this structure, even if not preferable to the property owner, in order to comply with the regulations does not deprive the property owner of a reasonable use of the property. Self-created zoning violations, especially those caused by unpermitted construction, do not rise to the level of granting of a variance. I do not believe that a reasonable or unusual hardship exists under the framework of statutes and regulations that would allow for the circumventing of zoning bulk regulations for detached accessory structures. I therefore recommend denial of this variance request. Then the next memo is to zoning board of appeals from Nate Nardi Cyrus, assistant city planner, January 13th, 2025, regarding variance application six Andrews Street to vary the setback between the principal and accessory structure from 10 to zero feet. Enforcement history, January 11th, 2024, the city of Torrington Building Department copied the land use department on a violation notice to Ms. Decker Balsamo regarding, regarding construction of a structure without permits at six Andrews Street. Ms. Balsamo immediately came into the office to obtain the necessary permits, but was informed by the zoning enforcement officer that the structure did not comply with the zoning regulations and must be removed. July 2nd, 2024, after no contact for several months, the zoning enforcement officer issued a notice of violation to Ms. Balsamo requesting that the structure be removed within 30 days. August 27th, 2024, after continued non-action, the zoning enforcement officer issued a cease and correct order requiring that the structure be removed or permitted within 30 days. Upon receipt of this notice, Ms. Balsamo indicated her intent to apply for a variance to allow her to retain the structure. The, the requested variance, the regulation to be varied is as followed. Accessory buildings or structures shall be located at least 10 feet from the principal structure and shall not be attached to the dwelling by a roofed structure. Accessory structure is immediately adjacent to the existing house, requiring a variance of 10 feet to be made compliant with the regulations. So in conclusion, I'm in agreeance with city planner Jeremy Lifer's memo dated January 13th, 2025, that there's no legal hardship meriting a variance of the zoning regulations. I therefore recommend the denial of this variance request. And I will say that there was confusion between Ms. Balsamo and myself. Because the carport was, had no separation from the principal dwelling, we usually treat that as a home addition. If it is a home addition, then you can see here on the map, it's subject to the, the setback shown, which is an eight-foot side yard setback and a 25-foot front yard setback. So she has that 25-foot front yard setback for the attachment, but it's still out of compliance if it is considered attached because it's only, it's five feet, five point two feet away from the, from the edge of the property and not eight. And looking at it, because it was clearly not attached, right, we had photos and documentation that it's not physically attached, then she does have five feet from the side yard, which this survey shows she does have. However, this section. Five point two point one E requires that 10-foot separation to be considered an accessory structure. And so that's the variance she's looking for is. Because it's, it should be 10 feet away if it's going to be considered an accessory structure. And I can, it's a little confusing, but I can take questions on that.
That was not brought up in the original violation. It was that, it was the setback. And then, after the setback was proved that it was five feet versus eight feet, which I'm clearly clear of, then I was told that I violated the E, which is 10 feet. And I don't understand why someone would build a carport 10 feet from their house. And again, this was to not just save from the water damage. And, and again, we did not intend to violate any regulations. It also has helped me if there's, you know, terrible weather. I was very ill for many weeks, so I had to have someone drive me. And it helped with, you know, weather conditions where I was able to get in the car and stay safe and dry, you know, dry. So again, there, there was a lapse in, in the communication, but it's, you know, it's, it is what happened. And you're more than welcome to come down and look at it and.
Can I ask?
Chuck it out and, and I, and I do want to, and I know this is probably a little ugly, but I was advised that.
Sir?
Wait a minute, to mention, to mention, first and foremost, I want to request that this matter remains open if needed, that I need to retain an attorney.
Jim, you have questions?
I had a couple of questions. I mean, I don't know if you want to. Given your last statement, I don't know if you want to wait until you talk to an attorney before you answer questions. That, you know, I did have a couple of questions about the photograph and, and just things I don't think would impact, honestly, from my perspective, your appeal. But, you know, I was just wondering, from the photo, it looks like, I can't, is there an actual roof on it? Is it a grid? Like, do you put, like, plants in there or something? Or is it, like, actually roofed?
It's a corrugated plastic roof.
Okay.
It's the stronger one. It's not, not on the curve, but a hexagonal.
Okay.
For snow.
So it does keep the snow out for money.
Much stronger. The entire structure is sound.
Well, I can, I did submit exactly what was entailed in building this and how many hurricane clamps are on it.
I put.
That's more building departments. Do you actually park your car under here?
Yeah, just underneath the very beginning of it. If it's not going to have bad elements, it's out, but it does save me from scraping my windows in the morning.
Right, right.
From ice and debris. And I have limited. Reach ability, can I say? And I have an SUV, so it'd be very difficult for me to clean off my car.
People off the top of the car.
Right, because of, I have an appliance on my body. But anyway, so that, I just want to let you know that the, the sonotubes and the concrete were dug and poured to spec. And I do want to let you know that it does have hurricane clips on it, 46 of them. So it's not going to go anywhere. Yeah, and again, you're more than welcome to come down and look at it. It's got double angle irons on it. It has hurricane clips, 46 of those, double angle irons, 10. And again, it's diverted the water away from my home, which is great because I'm not smelling the mold and the mildew in the basement. The sub pump hasn't gone on. What other questions did you have?
Also, so do you have another garage at your house? Do you have a garage at your house?
No.
No. And then, where did you, like, who, I guess, informed you that you have two side yards and two front yards? Was that from the zoning office? Like, I've never.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's in, hold on, let me find it. So because I have a corner property, I'm considered two side and two front, no back. And that's the zoning from Torrington.
Yeah, that's the way, yeah.
Yeah. Finish.
Two.
That makes front.
Odd situation because it is a corner property. The only good thing about the survey is that I found out that my elderly neighbor, who's since passed a few years ago, I have, like, 14 more foot of property.
Oh, from the survey.
Right, from the survey.
And then, I guess my last question is that, this, and this might be more for Nate, is that, so this is just a pure variance request? This is not an appeal of the cease and desist order because that was complied with, because she obtained the survey? I was looking at the remedy in the cease and desist order.
Right, no, it wasn't a, it, there was, there was no appeal. She wasn't able to get the permit until there was a variance because it doesn't meet zoning on there. So this isn't an appeal. This is a variance request.
Okay.
And the period for appeal has ended, ended, you know, in September or October.
Well, it looks like the, the order to cease and desist or cease and correct, I haven't seen that phrasing cease and correct yet, but. Had violations, but then said you were required within 30 days of this notice to submit a two survey, document to compliance with zoning regulations, or remove the structure from the property, provide proof of it. And that was having to do with the vehicle. But I guess, I was just trying to see, so this is just a variance?
Right, because she can't, in order to comply with the order, she would have to remove the structure until she can get a, if she can get a variance, then she doesn't have to. And so at the point of the cease and correct, you know, there was no punitive action toward her because she's in the process of obtaining a variance. She, you know, sought a survey, that takes some time. And so we're at the point here where this is just, you know, she's making her request for the variance to be able to retain the structure.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure we didn't have two things going here.
And once, yeah, once we receive the, once, if the variance is approved, then we would be able to process the zoning permit.
Sir?
Those were my questions.
Oops, sorry.
That's okay.
Do you have something to say?
On account of the layout of the land that we own, it would be impossible for us to put. A shelter for our vehicles anywhere else. And we were just short on land on that side. Where else could we put it? I don't believe anywhere. I think it would be a shame for me to have to tear it down.
Just a general question, had they?
In the mic.
I'm sorry.
My wife and I are more than happy to pay for the building permit and any fines incurred.
Well, thank you, but that, that wasn't what I, where I was going. Had they come first and asked to build, get a permit to build, we would be still at the same juncture.
Yeah.
Also, I mean, ultimately, we, we would be here whether they came to us first, or unfortunately, they've come to it after it's built, because it's non-compliant in its, in its form on the side of their house with the setbacks.
Yeah, that's correct.
So the variance would still be in question.
Right. For, for this specific layout, like, if we could, if we had, you know, if, again, you know, to your point about where it could be put on the property, I'm not sure that Public Works would allow a second curb cutoff of Andrews Street as far as another access. I mean, I understand that it doesn't make sense in the current layout of the, of the property, but I couldn't speak to their ability to put it anywhere else without Public Works' input as far as a second curb cut on Andrews Street. First, what they have on Pierce.
The, I guess, may I ask a quick question? So. Carports under our zoning regulations are considered an accessory building.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I think. Forgive me, Ms. Decker asked a good question, like, is it typical for a person who wants to put a carport on their property to then put it 10 feet away from their house? Is that, like, that just seems like a weird thing to me?
Right, and I agree. I think usually, I know my father had a carport. He did put it, not, he didn't live in Torrington, but he did not put it next to his house. And I know people do put them not next to their house, but obviously, to protect yourself from the elements, that makes sense. In most cases, when someone requests a carport like this, they would attach it to the, to the structure, to the existing house. And if that was the case, then it would just have to meet setbacks. And so that's usually the conversation that we have during permitting. It's like, can you have it 10 feet away from the structure? If not, can you substantially connect it to the principal structure and still make setbacks? And if they can't, then we, you know, recommend that they come up with a new plan because we can't approve it as it is.
So if they literally just put a couple of boards connecting it to the building, now it's connected and they have a five-foot setback?
So if they, if they made a substantial connection that was approved by the building department, you know, when, we couldn't, it couldn't be just like a board, a two-by-four nail, that would have to be some kind of, like, approved connection.
Hurricane clip.
Then it would have to meet an eight-foot setback, because the, the accessory structure setbacks are smaller. In this case, they're based on the lot size, so, because they have such a small lot, it's a five-foot side yard setback.
That would just be a side yard setback.
Right, and that's the problem. Either, either way you slice this, it's violating different elements of the zoning code. So it's either the separation is being violated or the eight-foot side yard setback. And that was what we were encountering. But since the application came in as unattached and it isn't attached, that's, that's the variance that would remedy it, in, in my opinion.
So Nate, quick, quick question.
Nate, could you repeat that? What remedy would it? I, I.
Yeah, so.
So we never discussed that you wanted to attach to the house, which would give, give the eight-foot variance. But what was the last part that you said?
So if you, the, I guess, the, the main point of it was that if you receive the variance tonight, then that would, that, that separation wouldn't be an issue and you'd be free to, to apply for the build, for the zoning permit. And we would grant the zoning permit. That's all I was saying, was that like, it would fix the situation if you received the variance tonight.
Sir?
Amen.
Yes.
The only reason why I did not attach it to the house is because I didn't want to disturb the gutters or the roof. I didn't want to disturb the main house.
I noticed that. I was gonna ask you.
Thank you.
It's above your.
A lot of thought into it.
Helen, in your information, I'm just curious, how large are the tubes? What's their diameter?
Oh, I got it.
They're ten inch tubes. They're all at least.
Forty six inches deep. I just had that for him. I was gonna read that all off to you.
They're very deep.
So the posts on there are six by six and the sonotubes are, sonotubes are ten by forty six.
Ten inch tubes?
Ten inches by forty six. So we have ten six by six galvanized post anchors.
Comment on any of that stuff.
Do you, I don't know if you have these pictures.
It is structurally sound, sir.
You know, I wouldn't dispute that it is or not, but I'll tell you, I'm surprised at how sometimes regulations change when it comes to integrity and size of things. That's wonderful. Did you have this inspected? Okay, so even after the fact, nobody looked at it and commented on the side of, size of your tubes?
So and and no, no one would, and no one would inspect it because they weren't able to receive a building permit until they received the zoning permit. So they were just told.
But so they just had neighbors and a contractor who advised them poorly. I'm sorry to hear that. Well, I do have a question on the size of the tubes supporting this size structure. Having.
How well? Well, so that is, I don't know that that's a zoning.
I don't think it is.
I think it's a building department question. So I don't think we even.
We can't go there.
Consider it or think about it. It's nothing to do.
I don't want it to blow over either. Okay. Helen, can I just ask you too, what was the main or the original purpose to build the carport?
The original was to try to divert the water that was coming into the basement. So any heavy rainfall, my sub pump would go on. And it was just mildew, damp, moldy smelling. And when we were sitting, talking with the contractor, he goes, you should build a carport, it'll divert the water. And I was like, well, that's awesome. I can park my car there. So it wasn't anything that was like pretty or anything like that. It was, it was the purpose of diverting the water. And it came into a second purpose.
He did not have an alternative to the water problem? I'm just curious.
No, we really were just chit chatting, having a couple of beers in the backyard. And that's what we, he came up with. And I said, well, that's defeating, you know, maybe two things in one. I'm gonna divert the water, save my foundation. And I can take advantage in the wintertime by parking my car under.
So the water issue was just a chronic annoyance to the house. It just kept.
All the time, you couldn't even sometimes walk in the backyard. It would be just mud. And it's, I also have water running from the street, which I had engineering come out and look at it. And it was the way the road, the road was paved. And they had to put a skirt at the end of my driveway, but my driveway is.
Uneven?
Uneven, very. That was gonna be my next step is to have a new driveway put in, but I have to wait for the street department to fix the road. Even if they did, they put another skirt coming down, but the plow hits it and takes it away every winter. But it was just to divert the water, make my yard happy. And I get a second advantage out of it by having a carport where I can park my car.
The carport is just a spinoff benefit.
Had you ever thought of putting a garage in the backyard?
Have I what?
Ever thought of putting a garage in the backyard? Was that ever?
No, because it's, it's, if you look at it, it's too narrow. And at the time, there was two maple trees back there. Which I had two taken down and then another one taken down a few years later. I also had a large pine tree that fell on the neighbor's fence that is now replaced. That's down. So I had quite a few trees, but now I'm treeless. So I really, the way the yard, unless the only way I would be able to build a garage would be to put it in the front yard. And I don't want that because that's not my driveway.
No.
I have thought about it in the past, you know, many years ago, in order to put a garage down at the end where the shed is, I would have to put blacktop all the way down and then risk more drainage into the foundation and basement. The way it is right now, I believe, is the ground is still semi-permeable. And it has a roof over it instead of putting in blacktop all the way down to a garage in the back.
Yeah.
Nate, I'm not sure if you can hear me, but do you have a picture of the side?
Already? Oh, who's talking?
I'm sorry.
I think that was Randy.
Yeah, it was, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see the, the site map. I'm curious if there's a way to share a picture of this, just so we can see the structure. None of us online can see that we're, we only, we're only able to see the the survey.
Yeah.
Because I do have a question about the mold, right? And so I think it's significant hardship, and I know that it's monetarily cannot be a a reason, but I'm curious about what's potentially documented for the health risk of the mold in the basement, if there's pictures. And if the health risk with the mold was discussed at the time of the memos that Jeremy Leifert and yourself, Nate, put together.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, so I see the overlap. It's above the gutter. It's above the gutter so that you are capturing that rain. Is there any drainage at all on the outside of that? Or is it just the fact that it's shedding the water away from the foundation that's basically keeping it dry or drier in the basement?
I don't think a garage would make it drier in the basement.
Not a good garage. I'm talking about.
I'm go.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was talking about the structure that you made there. Because what I'm, what I'm curious about is this, I'm curious if you take this down, do we have a health risk that could be that we have to, that somehow you would need to remedy? Because if you're stopping mold from being in the basement, mold, mold is absolutely terrible for being at home. And I think we all know that. So I'm just curious, like, what the, with, with the health, health risk that was raised about the reason why we needed, you needed to divert the water? If that was discussed? Or did that just?
Unfortunately, sir, I don't have any pictures of the basement when, when it was flooded out. My dryer and washer on pallets, also the furnace. Unfortunately, I do not have any pictures of my basement when, when there's water in it. No, I don't. I'm sorry.
So, so I guess my, another question.
However, your, your other, your, your other question, sir? I do plan on putting in a gravel bedrock where, where the water runs off the structure in question. I, and I'm actually letting the rain show me where to put it. And I, I would like to dig like maybe eighteen inches across and maybe like eighteen inches down and just put a gravel bed there. So when the water comes down, it has some place to go besides the dirt. And, you know, splashing mud on my wife's car.
Sorry.
So Nate, or even members of the, of the committee, I'm curious about the hardship that she mentioned around the risk of mold and, and potentially how that does or does not change. I think the direction of the memos by, by Nate and Jeremy Leifert.
So to have a zoning hardship, it has to be related to the land that the, that, you know, the, the actual lot, it's, has less to do with whether there is, you know, water or a mold health risk, you know, versus, you know, here, the, you know, and personally, I'm looking at it, I'm not sure, even if we were to close the hearing tonight, if I'd be ready to sort of make a, a decision on this because I am caught up in the idea that it's a corner lot, it has two side yards and two front yards. That's sort of a, as a corner lot, maybe a feature of the land that makes it different than other, you know, plots that, that would affect these questions of where things can go on the lot. I'm not sure about that. I have to, I have to think about it. You know, so that it would be more rooted in that question than it would be rooted in the question of whether there's mold in the basement. But I'm, you know, that's my opinion. I don't know if that's, you know, I don't think that's illegal hardship, but.
Well, I think there's several things that when we get down to what it is we're granting, it has all to do with the structure and its compliance with measurement. It's really not a remedy to a water issue per se. There may have been other alternatives that would have been a lot cheaper. And I'm just throwing it out there that would have diverted water differently. And I don't know what the, you know, the pitch of the, is that blacktop alongside the house? Is the water, you know, flowing towards the basement and seeping through? There may be other reasons that, you know, has nothing to do with the fact that the carport as a structure is out of compliance with the building. And then you throw in the corner lot situation and all the setbacks. So a little complicated.
Pardon?
It's a little complicated and.
The slope that comes down is unusable land to me, and it does angle off the boundary line. It's, it's not very usable. I do have a garden there. It is on our land. But other than that, it's, it's simply, I can't use it for anything else.
Just looking at this picture, is this end of the house where the carport, the door exits to the carport? I see lattice work. Is that a foundation or is that?
No, so see that number six? So when the house was redone back in two thousand, early two thousands, under, that was a porch. And the contractor enclosed it and to cover up and let no animals in, he put the lattice up.
I just wondered if there was a foundation under that.
No, sir.
Uh, do you have anything more that you'd like to share with us in your case?
No, again, I want to apologize that I, you know, we had no intention of violating any regulations or codes. And again, with the dimensions of the, the land, it would be, I would love to be approved for the variance. I mean, I don't know. I haven't built anything on my land in thirty years. So I just paid off my mortgage last year. And if you look, I have no permits because I didn't build anything. I didn't do anything. So this is my first build and I was misguided and I apologize for that. And again, I would love to be granted the, the variance.
Okay, so oh, do we have someone?
Secondary structure.
Oh, just say if anyone, does anyone else have anything to say on teams?
That we can't see.
It's not work.
Any committee members? Any questions?
Don't bring that up.
For the Deckers?
Can I ask, is there a way on this display of having maybe split screens so we can split screen the application and then split screen the other members of the commission? I feel like we can never see the people.
I think there is.
And then, you know, you click teams down there. Windows over usually work. Because that way we could see if people raising hands or looking like they want to say something or might make it a little easier to.
There they are.
Oh, here they are.
And then we.
So they're doing that, so because we couldn't be there before. And this is teams and you can split your screen, have two.
It's not letting her scan the window.
On teams at work, we do the same thing.
Maximize. If you hold, if you hold Windows key and hit like right arrow.
Steve and Frank need to have their.
Throw it over there.
So we can see them.
Even so, because then, then we'll be able to see if somebody's waving their hand or if they're, you know, gonna I find it very hard to use this thing. I can't click or move anything. It's all another control.
Can we close our public hearing?
I, I'll, I guess, let me just ask before we do that. Ms. Decker, you mentioned before you might want to leave it open to have counsel or not. I don't know if that's something you still want to do. We can leave the hearing open tonight, have it on the next agenda, or we can, if we close the hearing, then that means you can't submit anything else to the record and that we have to go from there to make our decision. And we kind of debated among ourselves here tonight. But you just wouldn't be able to participate in that discussion. So is that something you wish to keep it open? Do you want us to close it now? Like, you know, I don't want to have us close it when you wanted to hire somebody or add something.
Well, I, I spoke with an attorney and that was her recommendation was to leave it open if it was denied. So I'm not sure if that falls under what you're asking me.
You wouldn't be, so we couldn't, you wouldn't know if it was denied or not until after it was closed. So we had, we had to close the hearing. All evidence is in. And then I keep, damn, I'm like crouching in front, sorry. So we have to close the hearing and then we debate and vote and it could be there granted or denied.
Okay.
There was no, after that, there's no evidence coming in at all. And then if you ever wanted to appeal that, you'd be, this would be your record. This would be what you would.
Okay, and then I would bring it to, it would have to go to court after.
It would have to go to court after that. So, so if, if the advice was to keep it open, then you might want to have it. I mean, I don't know, it's up to you, but once we close the hearing, you cannot have it open anymore. So.
Right, and that's, that's, once it's closed and the decision is made, so if it's approved, it's approved. I move on and do the due diligence. If it's denied, then I can take it further.
Then you're, then you cannot submit anything else into the record and you'd have to choose whether to go to Superior Court or not.
Right, but can I bring it to the court after that if it's denied?
If, if it was denied, you'd have, I think, is it thirty days?
Yeah, there's a.
Thirty day appeal period to file an appeal to Superior Court. But again, then you would be limited to the record presented tonight. And nothing else new or comes into the record. So we'd be basing it on.
And yeah, basically, what we discussed tonight is what occurred. So, I mean, if we close it and I need to take it further, I can, I guess. This, again, this is my first time doing this. I have no clue. I'm going. Neither, neither have you. We'll get over here. All right, we'll make your decision. I, I, let's make it final for tonight and then if. make it final for tonight. And then if I have to take it further, depending on what the outcome is, then I'll deal with it at that time.
Yes. You'd like to. So you don't want to leave it open. You don't close it. You're.
Right. The only thing that she said to me was that you want to request that the matter remains open if it if I need to retain an attorney for guidance. But now I'm to the step where I'm thinking on the next step. If you approve me, then I go through the rest of the process. If you deny me, then I take it to court. Is that what your, is that the?
Those are your two options. Yeah.
Okay.
But with the understanding that if she takes it to court, they can't, like if an attorney says, oh, you should have brought this point up or something, that's not, that can't be brought in.
Right. So you.
What was that remark? I didn't.
That if you if we close it and it's denied and you then go to court, I think what what Attorney Steck is saying is that the only thing the court will be able to consider is the record of this hearing. So if there was, if an if when the attorney gets a hold of it, they thought there was something else to bring up, it wouldn't be able to be brought into the court case. It would only only this stuff.
Yeah, I think we covered everything. Basically, I mean, I I did explain that it was a lengthy situation due to my cancer surgery and my lengthy recovery. But otherwise, I my only issue is is that it started out as a the permit requirement and then the setback requirement, and then it changed to another setback requirement. So I want to just resolve it. And if we need to add and attach it to the house, as Nate stated, that's something that's could be done. I would have to check with, you know, a contractor to see, or he knows he used to build houses for a contractor. I just want to resolve it so I can enjoy my life going forward. I want to retire. I don't want any issues.
I just want to clarify so you understand with the attachment to the house and that scenario there. If it is attached to the house, then it has to meet the the eight foot setback.
Right.
And so it would have to be modified. It couldn't just be attached. It would have to be modified as well, but it could be modified, you know, to 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 be at least eight feet away. And then that would be just a regular zoning permit.
Well, I am eight feet away in the back. It's only in the the very corner front that I'm less than eight feet.
Correct. So the structure would have to be modified to taper or.
Or go for the variance for the eight feet.
Or or she may be able to reapply for a variance of a different sort of the circumstances have changed from the underlying.
She you could you could apply for another other variance.
But I think maybe. So so as long as you understand, I guess, that these are the documents that, you know, no more testimony comes in, no more papers come in, no more. You know, once the hearings closed, that's the evidentiary record on which a court would make its decision. So the courts, if you were to appeal, would go to the Superior Court and they'd look at all this that was submitted and say, was there a reasonable basis basically for the ZBA to have made their decision the way they did? And then they look at these papers. And if you're at court and you decide you want to admit something else or put something else into the record, you can't. It's just you're stuck with this record. So as long as you're aware of that, you know, that's up to you.
Well, as an attorney, what would your advice be?
I cannot give you my advice as an attorney on the record.
That one.
Yeah, I apologize, but I.
Try.
I know, wasn't it?
Can't do that in most context.
No, again, I just want to, you know, finish up and just say that it was because of the dimensions of the land. And right, the only thing now is the variance of the 10 feet away from the house, which I don't understand why someone would build a carport 10 feet from their house. So you have everything that I have. The only other thing would be the email conversation, but that's all documented also. So.
Email conversation?
Can I just say, can I just reiterate? I don't believe any of my neighbors or anybody in the surrounding neighborhood has a problem with it. It's not unsightly. And I truly believe that it will make our life easier as we get older.
You mentioned an email conversation. Is that something I don't see? Is that in the record that you?
I I didn't add that personal conversations or conversations between us on email to the record. She's free to do so, obviously.
Is that something that you wanted included in this record for the board to review? As it stands right now, your email conversations are not in the record.
I have a copy of it if you want it.
Yes. If you want.
I mean, it was just me asking for codes and what I violated and so forth.
But it's a record of your conversations, so it should be in there. Thank you. For the record, Helen gave me copies of her emails to Nate.
I did the whole team. I did Nate, Jeremy and Ashley.
Yes, well, he's he's the principal. He was first from July and up to present time. July of 2024.
Yes. And then when this email ceased, it went on to the portal. So any communication would be in the portal.
Um, so the options we have here is, I mean, I can read these into the record. For the folks that are coming in through Zoom, I can't scan them real time for your review. I could, but I could read all this into the record if you'd like to. Yeah.
Well, also, it could be if we if we did close the hearing tonight, that could be added into the record. We could all review it and then we could.
Make the decision.
Yeah.
Debate and make. I would prefer that.
Yeah, yeah. I I think that makes the most sense. I don't think it makes sense to read the entire
No.
pile of papers in the record.
Okay.
Yeah, and I and I do have just a briefing that I was reading off of. I don't know if this will help. It was just saying, you know, that I met the zoning and I mean, the survey and all that, but I don't think you need that. The everything is in the portal after that email.
Okay.
Okay.
Portal is that what's.
So that so that's not on the record. That is the portal that we that folks submit zoning and building permits to. You can have conversation back and forth between those. So if you have a copy of them and you want to submit them, they they're not going to know what's on there unless you submit that and they can review it if you'd like. Those are copies.
Oh, I thought it was when you sent, when you had the list up there, those were just pictures. It wasn't. Like I hit it. I'm hitting it like so many times.
It jumped out at you.
Pardon?
It jumped out at you. I saw it. It jumped out.
Would they have access to the portal like the city employees do?
I could, I mean, if you had a, if you had a succinct version of it there that, you know, that was accurate, I I mean, you can either submit it or I can go on and and kind of print it out and add it to the record for their consideration.
Yeah, I mean, it just basically says, I submitted this. Here's my survey. Here's the receipts. And basically, that's all the communication after that email.
Okay.
I will do that. I'll add that to the record so they can review it.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much.
All right. And how long will it be for the decision?
Well, let's close the public hearing. May have a motion to do that.
Yeah. Good. That's a question for you. So we added, this is in the the packet here. What's in the portal hasn't been added to the to the record yet for like, can I say, is is a statement that I'm going to put it on there constitute adding it to the record? Or do we have to leave it open until I do something?
It's probably honestly, it's probably smarter to leave it open until you do that. I think that I haven't had to deal with that at a level because of.
Right, right now?
Well, I'm just saying, is it printable this evening?
I don't know that it, I mean, well, so.
Is it printable?
Well, I think I think. If you're going to leave the hearing, if you're going to make the decision later, you could just receive all the material at the next meeting and then close the hearing.
Right. If we leave it, if we left it open, then we we could add these things to the the record. And you'd have an opportunity to say, yes, that's it. And no, that's not it. At the and then we could close it the next meeting and then.
You can verify the portal information.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So what we'll do is I'll upload this information. It'll be in the folder in the office, but I'll also upload it to the website that had all the information on it. And you can review that website and make sure that's what you were looking to submit. And then once you confirm that with me, then, you know, we'll be good.
I mean, I just want everyone to have the communication that occurred over the span of time. And again, I apologize that, you know, I had to go for surgery, but it it is what it is.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to leave it open.
We're going to leave it open.
Do we need to vote on leaving it open?
I motioned to leave the hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anyone else chiming in, may have a unanimous yea?
Aye.
Stella, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so moved. The hearing will remain open for the gathering of new information.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I I believe I said my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is Fishbone Enterprises.
Did not read it in, but it's still open. Maybe up in the office.
Good evening, Mr. Borgesi.
Hello, I'm Alan Borgesi. I am a resident engineer, chairman of Borgesi Building and Engineering, and this is.
John Ferris, I own Fishbone Enterprises LLC in tactical arts.
Let me let me pause you real quick because we have a couple procedural things. We've got to read the notice into the record. Then we got to vote to open the public hearing. And then we got to get these guys to introduce themselves on that record. Just procedural.
We also didn't seat anyone.
I mean, to seat anyone. Well, he said everyone at the very, very beginning of the meeting.
That would be everyone seated for the.
So I believe that's for both.
Do we reiterate that for this? Who's?
Probably.
Okay.
So I found so I found Helen's notice.
Okay.
That wasn't in today.
To take a moment.
Yeah, can I run up and get that?
Forgive us. He's just going to run up and grab the notice so it could be read into the record.
You said you look tired.
Are you retired?
What a way to go. Nonsense. You love it.
So for the for the record, we have the two receipts from the the mailings.
Okay.
Well, did we open the record yet?
And we'll take it.
Do we open the record yet?
Are we officially on the record?
Could we? No.
I know, I know. Doing stuff on the starting.
Yeah.
If there's a record, we can.
I'll hold them then.
Yeah, she.
So we're going to open the next.
Well, she she has to, we have to read the legal notice. That's what we missed. So we're going to do that at the next meeting for the because the public hearing is still open. So we're going to read that legal notice. But and we have that. We have Helen's legal notice.
Uh, that's where she's going.
This is the first meeting I haven't put together the things myself, so it's totally my fault for not reviewing it. Sorry for this, guys.
I think so. Back this out of it then.
Yeah, you can reduce this.
That was the one.
Need a copy. I have it right here.
I'm just gonna actually put it right up on the screen.
Yeah. That'd be best. Most of my discussions are going to be raw that layout.
Um, the layout from the.
That's correct. I believe that's the one that was recorded.
I like that better. Can't see that out loud. Thank you. Oh, Harold Burns is still your next door neighbor.
So it's lead notice, open public hearing. Seat. Seat members. Space. Perfect. Do you do you want to read it? Or do you want me to? I guess it doesn't matter. I'll read it. Fine. All right. So the first thing that would be done would be to introduce the.
A new roll call?
Name the application.
Okay.
And then ask me to read the this into the record.
All right, for our second item of business.
Oh, we got to make sure we're on the.
Are we recording?
What?
Just start the recording.
No, it's already. It's it's still rolling. Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
So we're a variance application for a fish bone enter. So we're a variance application for Fishbone Enterprises, 34 Midgeon Avenue, a variance for backing out into the public street. Nate, would you read the?
Sure. The zoning board of appeals has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Monday, January 13th, 2025, in City Hall Auditorium, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Variance applicant, Fishbone Enterprises LLC, location 34 Midgeon Ave. Proposal variance to grant relief on zoning restriction for backing out of parking lot directly into public street per section 5.13.2.0. Time of hearing, 7:00 PM. Copies of the above-mentioned plan and application are on file in the city land use office, City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Mark Trevella, Zoning Board of Appeals dated in Torrington, Connecticut, this 29th day of December, 2024. Yeah. And it was also, so it was run on the 29th, and it was run on January 6th, 2025.
And you also entered in that we had the receipts from the letter?
Well, now you can open that. Now you would open the public hearing.
Okay.
So you would seat the members and then open the hearing.
Well, let's seat the members. Randy Stelma, Stephen Thompson, and then a regular member is Jim Steck, myself, Mark Trevella, Ken Edwards, and Nate, sir, is here.
I'm not on that, but I'm.
No, you're not, but you're here. Okay. Motion to open the public hearing for Fishbone Enterprises?
I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, gentlemen?
Stephen says aye.
Okay, I think that was everyone.
Hello again, I'm Alan Borgesi, Borgesi Building and Insuring Company. I've got a question. How many people on this board right now can vote? Five, okay.
Five.
This is kind of interesting. John had a slight acquaintance with me, a building addition that he wanted to do at one time, and another building that he was considering, but it didn't go through. And then he approached me and he asked me if we could come up with a site plan showing parking on the front of his building that's different than the existing site plan, and also different than a print that was done by Burgland. And I may say this incorrectly, if I do, John, please correct me, but he was indicating that the town would like him to follow through and revise his parking to match that print done by Burgland in 88.
Because Midgeon Avenue was done in 88, yes. Correct.
It's kind of interesting for me that a print was filed in 1988, and they're utilizing this print to say that, Mr. Ferris, you have to conform to this print because we're gonna rebuild Midgeon Avenue, and 1988 is, 98, 208, is thirty-some odd years ago. And that seems like it's not a logical request. Let me keep going here. He was asked to appear as for a variance. I don't think this is grounds for a variance. I believe this is a non-conforming use that's been going on at least 38 years. By appearing here, I'm concerned that he will set the grounds that he agrees it's room for a variance. And I would like to say that I'm not even sure we should be here for a variance. I'd like to set that as a basis for a discussion. And the reason I'm saying that is I can imagine someday someone said, well, you agreed to a variance, you appeared, you paid the fine, and you've set the precedent now that this is a variance. And I think it's more of a taking. I'd like the board to consider that, and that's probably more of a legal issue, although there are a couple attorneys on the board here. And should be thought about before we even perhaps go to the next step, but then I'll discuss the, I discussed the problems of a variance here. First of all, I think the request is being done here for safety. John consulted the police department, and John, what were the results of that discussion?
It went back as far as.
1997, I think.
Yeah, Sergeant Baldass from Traffic did a entry for any incidents in front of 34 Midgeon, and he found that as far back as the records go, from 1997 to present, there's absolutely zero issues. Did not see any recorded motorfield crashes listed in this address of 34 Midgeon Avenue. So I have copies for each of you if you'd like.
I'd like you to pass them to them, please.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
For the record, Mr. Ferris handed in a two-page document titled Tactical Arms. Appears to be an email from Sergeant Baldass with the subject 34 Midgeon Avenue Accident Statistics.
And also for the record, while we're thinking of it, the receipt of the two certified mailing receipts for both abutting property owners were received at the meeting complying with that section of the regulation.
The second thing I'd like to talk to is this print that Mr. Burgland did. I don't know what he did, what instructions there were, and what the purpose was. But I look at it, and if you look at that print, there is a handicap spot with, I guess, the side toward the building, which would be the exiting off the handicap spot. Another parking place toward the sidewalk, toward Midgeon Avenue, and then three additional parking places opposite. It's kind of interesting because if I was the cars that were parking on the rest of the parking lot, which is alongside of what says here Harold James Burns Building, those people would have no way, if there's five cars parked there, no way of getting to the front door of the building. Let's think about that for a minute. Now, we're doing this for safety, and yet if somebody parks there, and they do show some proposed planters, those planters are actually bottlers right there that are protecting the building from being hit by cars going into it, and probably to protect the industry. I'm not even sure of that. But if I add a five-foot sidewalk in there, there really will be one handicap spot, and there will be two other spots. So we show here three parking places. That is false. There will be only, if I went to the building department or planning and zoning and I presented this plan, they would not allow it. And they would cite safety. Another safety concern here is somebody that's coming in off of Midgeon Avenue into those parking places, it is against all DOT and other regulations to immediately park. There should be at least an island there, and the normal state DOT, before you make a parking space, we drive in a driveway and make a left or right turn, is 50 feet. So I drew a sketch here.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Borgesi has given the commission a map with a green, looks like an oval on it, zoomed in section of the survey that you're referring to as the Burgland Survey. Is that accurate? Mr. Borgesi, you're calling it the Burgland Survey?
I took Burgland Survey.
Okay, and this is a zoom in of that map?
I used it to a scale that was measurable. Again, that distance off of the curb of the road is 20 feet. And as you could see there, there really is one handicap parking place, which I would have to exit onto the sidewalk, which is not normal. Oh, and also one other parking place that's left. So he really ends up with two parking places in order to have access for his front door to the other parking places. And I think planning and zoning, if I presented this plan to you, would tell me I can't have that. So the other option is we have no parking at all in the front. We put a sidewalk in there and an island in there and eliminate all parking. But I think this whole premise of this request is a drawing of Mr. Burgland that was recorded, and somehow it's being tied to the fact that John Ferris has to build that because it was recorded 38 years ago. My hardship here is going to be very clear. This is a hardship of safety and customer access for the client. It's safety for the town, it's safety for clients, and it's for the function of the business itself. And by the way, I've been there four or five times. Every time I pull into the place, I pull into the front. Other customers that are there are pulled into the front, and again, it's been a proven track record that this is not a safe turning backing out. We've had records from the police department. That's basically my presentation. John, you want to say something?
Um, I'd just like to say that, I mean, I've been there 18 years, and in those 18 years, there's really not been an issue. I've been parking like that since the day I built the place, and that's how it's been pretty much. You know, that's how customers park. That's how everyone, common sense pulls you in there. Common sense doesn't pull you in any other way. And, I mean, looking at it, because I've been there for so long, too, the distance from the traffic light to my, to 34 is minimal, where you have, you know, two, three, and four family houses down the other end of Midgeon Avenue, you're able to back out into the road, and cars are able to go full speed, if not faster, where, I mean, it's minimal speed where I am, if it's a constellation of, you know, speed, but it's very minimal where I'm at. And there are other properties that park like that, that are grandfathered in, that I own.
One final thing, I did a drawing, which we had up on the board. And I thought about it, and I literally thought about it while I was here waiting in the last meeting. And that's made for perhaps a compromise drawing that the town should consider and maybe would consider. I'm gonna, I added a few lines on it while I'm sitting here. I'd like you to look at this, please. That drawing.
That's the one that we have.
That's what you have. I did it. Oh, right.
Well, that's an island.
And that island, the center island that's hatched out where the sign is, I think if we did this, and if we made the part between that hatch, double hatch island and the road, a grass island, that would help make it two defined entrances, one at the other property to the top of the page, and the second entry to the bottom of the page, with about a 20-foot grass island in the middle. John would be very happy, I think, to do that, and it would help still maintain what he has now and provide good access and safe access to his, for his customers.
Would you read Jamie's?
He's eight.
Alright, so this is a memo to Zoning Board of Appeals from Jeremy Leifer, AICP City Planner, dated January 13th, 2025, Proposed Variance Application 34 Midgeon Ave. I've reviewed the file for this proposed variance application for the variance of section 5.13.2.0, the zoning regulation, which prohibits parking spaces from having direct access to a public street and prohibits traffic to back out into the public street. As with any other zoning request, the applicant is bound by CT General Statutes 8-6 and Torrington zoning regulations 8.1.3. These regulations and statutes require the applicant provide proof of unusual hardship that is directly related to the unusual features of the property and not personal to the applicant or financial that would deprave the property owner of a reasonable use of the property in absence of the variance. This property was approved for a compliant parking plan in March of 1988 that met the requirements of the regulation at the time, including the appropriate travel lanes and the avoidance of direct access to the street for any parking space that would require backing into Midgeon Ave. Over the years, the parking alignment on the property has been modified without approval of Planning and Zoning Commission. Therefore, there is no pre-existing legal nonconformity on the property. In my opinion, I believe that the parking on the property can be redesigned, even if not preferable to the applicant, to meet the zoning regulations. So I do not believe that a reasonable or unusual hardship exists under the framework of statute and regulation. The regulation as it stands is in place for the protection of public health and safety. I therefore recommend the denial of this variance request.
May I make another comment?
Mark? I'm sorry, Mr. Borgesi's asking. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
May I make another comment?
Yes, please.
I was just talking to John, and his time of being there, since it was, since when?
2007.
2007. How many years is that?
Going on 18?
18 years. It was indicated in writing there that many modifications were made. John, have you made any modifications?
I've made no modifications at all.
So if the modifications were made, it was made before our tenure. I want to clarify that for record.
Yeah, it was never striped. It was all open, never striped. And the sign that I put up, I put it in the same exact spot as the sign that was Torrington Mattress. I remember that.
You're older than me.
I am.
I remember when this was DeVita Chrysler.
Yeah, still have the floor in there. And that brings up another thing, too. I mean, when it was DeVita Motor Sales, it was a dealership, they parked in front. The uniqueness of the building, the way the setback is off the road.
As a kid, I remember those were the cars for sale, not customers.
Still, oddly enough, I remember.
So, can I?
Oh, I'm just gonna clarify. Which, which plan are we considering? The one that was pre-existing and never executed, or some of these variations that offer?
So the variance request does not have to do with the plans themselves. That would be, that would be planning and zoning's purview. It's the waiver, or it's the variance to allow the backing out onto Midgeon Ave. So if they receive this variance, they would have, then they would develop a plan based on everything in the regulation except for that piece, which would have been varied by this committee.
Which doesn't function.
Doesn't the plan influence our vote, given today's safety concerns?
I'm, in my, I mean, it's really just, well, right, you have, you're looking to determine if there is a legal hardship, right? And that is, so the plans themselves, you're not voting on actually implementing any of these plans. Mr. Borgesi is showing you, kind of giving you context by showing you alternative plans that can be done. But it's just a hardship based on how the setup of the property is, the physical nature of the law for this specific backing out, and it would just remove that from the regulation to back out, so they could have flexibility in designing something that would allow them to back out.
So we're being asked for a variance because they've got some plans that if we don't give it, they wouldn't be able to do.
They would have to, they would have to modify it to meet that regulation.
Well, I guess if I can ask a couple questions, so that kind of gets to, how did we get here? How do we, why are you?
How did I get to this point?
Yeah, like, why, what made you decide to put lines like the new map versus the old map?
I mean, I've always parked like that forever. It wasn't until last year that I got a call from the engineering department to come in to come in and talk about, because I own four separate properties. They're doing Midgeon Avenue over, and they had all these prints laid out on tables, and you know, I own nine Midgeon also where Cravings is, and you're backing out all curb cut, all the way around. I own 19, that's all open. It's mostly curb cut with a small little bit of sidewalk with a driveway. And then he got to 34, and he brought up this plan, and I'm. And I'm looking at it and he's talking about sidewalks. I'm like, well, that's not how I park. And explaining the whole situation, how I park, I pull parking in, people have been backing out for years. It's, and caught talking to Jeremy, going to, um, you know, different offices and doing the necessary paper. Here we are.
So then where did this Burgland map come from? What was, do you know anything about this map?
I had no idea about this map.
Okay. Because I don't see, is it recorded in the land records? I don't see any recording information on the map itself.
It is the filed map on the record in the land use office.
The land use office, okay.
I don't know.
That's the one from nineteen eighty-eight.
Right. And based on Jeremy's memo, that's, that's what he considers to be the map of record for, I don't, I don't think in the, in the memo, he says whether or not it's, was the, um, recorded map.
Right. It says this property was approved for a compliant parking plan in March of nineteen eighty-eight. Was it in connection with an application? Was it in connection with a file? Like, where'd this come from, this map?
It was the only recorded, it was the only site plan. I'm, and again, I'm speaking for him. So, you know, if you have further questions for Jeremy on this, but he, um, then we'd have to just leave the public hearing open and he'd have to speak to that directly or could provide something. But he, uh, but it's my assumption that it is like the map of record, that it was the recorded map.
Like, I mean, I think that's something we should figure out just to see what we're starting with here because the, the, I don't know if this is a map that was a proposed plan, if this is the actual plan, if this was something that was approved in connection with a parking space counting for a use, or if it was a change of use form, or where, where, you know, I don't know what, where this is because the, you know, um, is, I've, I, like some of the other members of the board, I drive by this property often. Um, and I've sort of two comments on that. One, I've never noticed, well, three comments really. One, I've never noticed the, the lines to be drawn. And are any lines drawn on that?
They've never, I've never had lines there ever.
Since you've owned it?
I never there when I bought it either. There were never lines there. It was always.
Um, how long has that sign been located where it's located?
The tactical arms sign?
Yeah.
Cause two thousand seven is when I started doing everything.
And then you put it where a mattress sign was?
Yeah, so he had like a wooden sign there. So we removed the wooden sign and we put, you know, we had to dig down a certain amount of feet for the concrete to be pulled, to have that sign.
It just looks like that would be in one of these spaces on this map. Is that accurate? If, if I were to look at the, where the sign is.
You're looking at Burgland's?
Which, yeah.
I'm looking at Burgland's.
Burgland's map is a proposed sign the north side of the property.
Right on the other side. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So this sign did not exist in Burgland's map then, but.
They probably, I'm gonna assume that it was the Torrington Mattress factory. They put that sign wherever they put it. And I put my sign right next to it, right on top of it.
I think I remember that in Architectural Review.
Yep, I had to go before a board.
Was that really seventeen years ago?
Yeah.
Because it was one of our first low signs. I remember. And it was so, so obvious being red, right? So, yeah, that was a long time. But the mattress sign was there.
Yep.
I guess my last question is.
James, I'd like to say a couple of things here. And you and I all know this, everybody on the board knows this. If we'd come in for modification, if we came in for a sign today, perhaps, or a different modification or addition, at that point, I think this commission has a legal right to make modifications. Considering no changes are being made on this, and you're asking John in this case to abandon parking he's had for years and years and years, and we can kind of prove that this was at least thirty-five years of parking exactly the same place. This is not a normal request. That's our statement.
Uh, for the record, I'm not asking him to do anything.
I'm sorry.
I'm not asking him to do anything.
Okay.
Right? I mean, that, so, um, it also appears, when I drive by, I thought there was a lot more distance from the road to the building. It, like, is there a gap there of, like, state-owned land or something that is between, you know, the boundary line only goes up to a certain point and then there's more before the road hits or?
You're talking in the front?
In the front.
I mean, you're probably talking sidewalk, too. I mean, the sidewalk is there. I mean, you're not, you can't count the sidewalk.
Right.
But yeah, there's.
It just seems like a.
Eight foot of sidewalk or six foot of sidewalk on top of that. And people, I mean, there's small cars, they don't have an issue then even back into the road. They have enough of the curve to pull out and back out of that spot. But there is existing, right now, there are no sidewalks there. It's all curb cut. And once they do Midgeon Avenue over, it's going to be all curbs and you can't drive onto a sidewalk.
That was part of my question, too. It's probably not curb cut. They're probably buried. The granite curbing is probably below grade.
They're probably red.
For probably quite many, many years.
It's always been, well, it's always been flush.
Yes, I can well appreciate that it's probably been flush for forty years. Um, but that would have to be considered with, with the plan of Midgeon Avenue, too, right? I mean, not us, but just that it impact.
I've gone, I've talked to engineering department, I've talked to Paul, and they're aware of what's, what I'm doing, too.
So I assume we're not sure that nineteen eighty-eight plan was ever implemented or, but, but what's there now is not what's on the nineteen eighty-eight drawings.
And you don't park like the nineteen eighty-eight.
No, never did, ever.
You park like?
I park into the building, those first, just like, just like his plan shows.
And do you, how many handicap spots are there on the, on the property? Just one?
One, just one, yeah, one. It's right next, it would be right next to the door.
This might be an Alan question, Mr. Burgess, but how many spaces does the use require in the zoning regulations? What's the minimum amount of parking spaces that this use needs?
Downtown district doesn't require any.
Is your question, how many are required by code?
Yeah, by regulation, by the, by the zoning regulations, I guess, how many?
There's adequate parking here, even without the parking in the front, to be very candid with you.
Yeah.
Except, as I said, literally a hundred percent of his customers that come into the building, park in the front because that's where the front door is.
I just have one concern, too, that the handicap spot being on the other side of the sign backing out seems to be a bit of an obstruction. I may just, to think of that.
He was just saying that the handicap spot, he would have concerns because the sign would be blocking if he were to be backing out. I mean.
If, if you went out there, and maybe we should continue this and go out there and try it. I did it several times where you're, on your way backing out, there's plenty of visibility to the road, there's your road. Let me tell you something else that's good there. Because the traffic light is literally two hundred feet away or some number.
Right.
There's a lot of queuing time on that. And for those of you who don't know, queuing time is a waiting time when there's no traffic at all flowing.
And it's not the um, stack side of the light.
That's right. It's down the middle of a long stretch of people going fifty miles an hour. You're literally stopping.
Oh, midget, come on, fifty? You were a kid once. Well.
Does anybody on, um, teams have any questions? Randy, Stephen?
Not at this time, thank you. I have no further questions.
Plus Frank.
Yeah, I'm noting that.
So let's just clarify our question. What is it that we're voting on?
You were voting on, you were vote, you were, you were voting to say that there is a hardship based on the law, shape, dimensions, that necessitates the variance of the regulation that doesn't allow them to back out onto Midgeon Ave. That's the only, that's the only question, and that's the only thing being asked to be waived in this case. So if the commission decides that there is, or the board decides that there is a variant, or there is a hardship, a legal hardship that's valid, then the decision would be to, to grant a variance to allow them to back out onto Midgeon Ave.
And does this?
Not on any specific plan. It's just, you know, that would, that is the purview of planning and zoning. They would, you know, weigh all of the separate factors for modifying the site.
Well, as Alan pointed out, too, I mean, Midgeon Avenue is a long road. Does this rule apply further up the street?
It's, uh.
Where people have driveways and it's residential?
Would, would it be helpful?
They're allowable.
Read the, um, regulation.
You can have it right here if you'd like it.
Oh, thank you. Because it's pretty simple. Um, except in the case of one, two, or three family residents, no parking space shall have direct access to a public street. Except in the case of one, two, and three family residents, vehicles shall not be permitted to back out and onto a public street.
Okay, let me, let me comment about that. First of all, I don't know when that regulation became effective, number one. And number two, I think we all know that that regulation is for new buildings, new proposals, not something that's been existing for forty or fifty or longer years. To go back retroactively and try to enforce that is going to be very interesting because we have many, many situations like that, including a restaurant across the street that has only come back into the street and other places. And at what point do you stop? Any new construction? I agree with you absolutely. Any, any new application for, for reconstruction of this site? I think you have the power to do that. I think this is incorrect to enforce that on somebody that that's been in existence for forty years.
And the point that, you know, and the point that Mr. Leifer is making to that is that he's contesting that there was an approved site plan in nineteen eighty-eight that was the site plan on record based on the regulations at the time. And so I think our office would absolutely agree that if it was prior to any zoning regulation, to prior to the enactment of this specific zoning regulation, then it would be grandfathered, right? Let's say that it was enacted in nineteen fifty-seven, um, with the adoption of zoning, then, you know, it would be grandfathered if it existed prior to that. But the point that Jeremy is making is that there was an approved site plan that conformed to the regulation at the time. And that site plan doesn't show backing out onto the public street, which is what, you know, the, the, the portion of the regulation that's being asked for the variance.
I guess that's where I think that we need to hear from Jeremy on this to show us why this is considered an approved site plan of the lot. Because I don't see like a zoning sign off on here. Usually you'll see like sign off by the zoning, you know, office or something showing approval of this. I don't know if this was something that's just literally in a manila folder with this address on it in the, in the files, and it has nothing connecting whether this was ever approved or not, or if this is, you know, I don't know what this is, um, this Burgland map yet. So I think, you know, for my part, I'd like to hear from, um, Jeremy on, on what, how this is an approval, how this is a binding sort of parking plan that existed prior to the, prior to the application. I just can't see it right now, so.
I'll make one more statement. It seems to me logically that the, under the obligation of the city, if they knew back in nineteen eighty-eight they had a problem, to let it linger for thirty-seven years is sure setting a precedent that they didn't care that much to enforce it. And suddenly thirty-seven years later, come up with, oh, we want to enforce something that we might have done, might have done, and nobody's alive probably to remember this in nineteen eighty-eight. This doesn't seem fair to me.
John, other than Crave, and I'm thinking maybe the, is it Giordano's sign up the street?
I'm sorry?
Sign, the sign business, is it Giordano's?
Yes, so.
Does he back out?
No, not now because something, they put, there was, they put landscaping in and because they did something, um, they said that now that you've finished, because I talked to him yesterday, he was, they used to be auto parts center, you used to back out. So all of those buildings, all of those commercial buildings, you were able to back out into Midgeon, every single one of them.
You can't.
He can't now, no. But Torrington Honda, the old Torrington Honda, you can.
So I'm just thinking of all the properties on that end of the street, other than Crave and you.
I have a print of Torrington Honda, too.
Anyone else who's in this predicament. Because the, the front of the, your next door neighbor is all landscaped. And the gas, the refurnishing place on the corner is ample maneuverability. You'll form the funeral parlor.
Yeah, I own that, too. That's a driveway on the side. You have to, you can back out into that.
And then, and then up above all this are private residences.
Yes.
Trying to think where's the first private, no Midgeon, so what? But if they are, I mean, those are private homes, so. This only affects two businesses ultimately.
Well, it affects everyone who's, you know, as you're saying, in a kind of, in a state that they're in now, right?
The other properties, of course, that can always change. So. Would you like to hear from Jeremy? Shall we table this?
And I prefer to be able to hear from Jeremy on the, on the, on that, that's just me. I don't know, whatever.
Nineteen eighty-eight plan, that's where you're getting it?
Yeah, I guess my, I, I would move to keep the hearing open. To hear from Jeremy at the next meeting and then, so there's my motion.
That's a good motion. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Steve? Randy?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So we shall table this until our next, or the next meeting?
Yeah, and I'll ask Jeremy to come in Zoom or in person, you know, to be able to answer questions for the commission on that.
Okay.
For the record.
And we'll try to make it as soon as possible.
I thank you for tolerating me and for the time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Always, Mr. Burgess. Okay, um, do we have any other business? If not, motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
I'll second, I'll second.
Seconds.
And, uh,
All in favor?
All in favor from Randy and Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, meeting over. Meeting adjourned.
Sorry for the snafu there with the.
Interesting.
Teacher, this commission doesn't need enough to have that, like, you know, like, like planning and zoning, it's like, like, you know, the vice chair always reads the, reads the memo or that reads the notice in and then.
I can do the, get a script.
But we don't meet often enough.
That's, well, that's what happened. Just, well. I can make a cheat sheet, right?
The other thing you can do, too, is.
I think I used to have one. Right.
Would I want to do that voluntarily? Bad enough, I go on my own.
Okay. I will do that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's just a guide. That'll fine.
Yeah, so my own.
You need the serious needle.